Okay, good evening. The date is September 3rd, 2025, and the time is 6:02. I hereby call to order the first public budget hearing of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida. Jenny, would you please take the role?
Yes. Mayor Keith Kehoe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Veick.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Razik.
Here.
City Manager Mike Hein.
Here.
City Attorney Anita Drossick-Harver.
Here.
Sergeant-at-Arms Chief Sean Ramsey.
Here.
City Clerk Virginia Wright.
Here.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. Agenda item one, Ordinance 2025-23, Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2026 Millage Rate, First Reading. Mr. Hein?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. If the clerk can read the ordinance into the record.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-23, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Adopting a Final Millage Rate of 6.0000 per $1,000 valuation for regular ad valorem taxes to be levied for the City of Groveland for the fiscal year October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, setting forth the percent by which the millage rate is greater than the rollback rate, providing for directions to the city manager and providing for an effective date. The millage rate of 6.0000 for fiscal year October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, represents a 13.86% increase over the rollback ad valorem rate of 5.2698 for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Thank you for being here this evening on the first formal hearing. The slide up shows the process that we've gone through to date. As you know, we went through a series of workshops where each department had appeared before the mayor and council in workshop settings to go through their line item budgets and explain what makes up and comprises the operations in each department. On July 18th is required statutorily, you set your maximum mil rate. That's a rate that you cannot exceed, and that goes out as a notice to the homeowners and property owners so they understand what their maximum levy could be in the impact. We had a budget workshop August 26th where we went over the general fund primarily, and just gave you four alternatives, which we'll go over again this evening. You had individual meetings with the finance staff where some of you presented some ideas and had some questions. Tonight is the first hearing. You can set a different maximum millage rate. You cannot go higher than what you've already set, but you can go lower. The final public hearing is statutorily required on September 15th, and then we send that information to the tax collector. This graphic just simply displays what the impact on an average homeowner would be if the council adopted a 6.0 mil rate for the final budget. So the annual property tax burden would increase $71 on the average valued home with a homestead or $5 per month, $596. And you can see the impact without a homestead on the other side of the slide. This is just a different graphical representation based on varying valuations and the impact, again, going from a 5.5, the existing tax rate, to a 6.0, and what that burden would be on property owners based on different valuations. On the bottom, of course, you have the average or mean, and you have the median or the middle. These are graphics that we've included for the last couple of years, just to show in comparison to public safety operating expenditures and where property tax dollars get absorbed. So as you can see, we anticipate revenues of 13.364, 250 at the 6.0. That would compare to what the public safety operating budget, and again, operating is non-capital and does not include the fire assessment. Those expenses alone are 12.6 million. We talk about good news and bad news. That's a little misleading. You can call it pluses, minuses, additions, or strains, but generally, you know, the good news is the property values have increased, in part, in large part because of growth. We've had some new commercial structures come onto the tax rolls. We've had increased housing stock. That will bring in an additional 1.62 million. And we heard some of those commentaries last night at the fire assessment, well, if you're getting these new houses and new commercial structures, why can't you afford things? And that displays at the 5 point, or at the 6.0, it'd be a million 62. Other revenues increased, as you would expect, general fund for utility and gas tax. The more homes you have and more commercial structures, obviously, you'll get increased revenue from franchise fees. And then there's an increase in general fund revenue from state sales tax and the half-cent sales tax. So the good news totals 1.9. And then you get to some of the stressors on general fund operating budgets. $708,000 increase in salaries in FICA, assuming a 4% increase. $236,000 increase in general fund expense for retirement. You can see the FRS contribution for public safety went from 32.79 to 35.19. $318,000 increase in general fund expense for health insurance, $29,000 for expense, dental, vision, life, et cetera. And the $57,000 increase for wellness incentive. And let me just explain that again for the record. What that is, is an offering to our employees who previously didn't have to contribute toward their single coverage. So historically, the city did not charge employees who had single health insurance coverage. As you can see, it's going up 14.8% this year, and it's been going up double digits the last several years that I can remember. We are proposing to charge employees on single coverage $300 per paycheck. 30, thank you, sorry, $30 per paycheck, which of course ends up at $720 per year. As an incentive, because we understand from working with our health insurance pooled providers that if we can get them into more wellness-oriented programs and better lifestyles, it will overall reduce our future liabilities and costs. So we're going to offer them an incentive at or around the third or fourth, Thursday, third Friday in November, Black Friday, of $500. So between now and November, they would simply have to attend one seminar and download an app, and they would get $500. Then, over the course of the next year, 12 months, they would have to do a series of things outlined by the prescriber and show activities, and they could earn another 500. So the net benefit would actually be positive from a cash standpoint to them. It gets the employees accustomed to having to contribute and value the single coverage. So that's what that $57,000 represents. Miscellaneous and other sources of revenues decreased 1.56. Health insurance rebate we received, we don't anticipate, and other sources are carryforward, were decreasing by 1.396. CRA board acted a couple weeks ago and chose to reduce the transfer of funding for a police officer and code compliance officer, so those portions were transferred back into the general fund. So the stressors or bad news were 2.9 compared to the 1.9 in good news, and that's without any other changes in operating levels. Then, we had discussed through the workshops and a variety of meetings, providing alternatives, recognizing that there's been significant turnover with the mayor and council, and just giving some broad options. This shows existing levels of service with dispatch being transferred to the county, basically. And that represents a millage rate of 5.6. It includes a carryforward and designation of funding for the train depot revitalization and funding for road maintenance, and also assumes a $350,000 carryforward, which is a non-recurring revenue funding, operating recurring expense. Version B is basically version A without outsourcing or transferring dispatch services to the county for the remainder of next fiscal year. So you can see, basically, the variability of that is 0.05 in the millage rate. And again, that's a policy decision that's up to the mayor and council, and we can have that direction tonight if you'd like. Version C is what's called a structurally balanced. It's version A without any changes except removing the carryforward. And it also is assuming dispatch is transferred. So again, 10th of a mil represents about $250,000, so you can use that as a variable in your determinations. Option D is what's called enhanced version, and really what that is, is an à la carte menu option for different programs or services that aren't provided in any of the other options and things that you're not investing in currently, like trails and sidewalks, hurricane reserves. And then it provides, you know, what a new police officer, fully funded, would cause, street maintenance workers and Public Works Administration enhancement. And that shows you again, and we're prepared to, A, show what the impact on homeowners would be at a different maximum mil rate, and also help the community and the council have a conversation if you choose some of these enhanced versions. This is new from the workshop, and basically, it just shows the change in FTEs. So you're converting that part-time lean search clerk, which was in development services. We're proposing to, first of all, increase the fees to match what other parties are doing and transfer that to the city clerk to help with some of the increased workload that they've experienced, given the volume of meetings and minutes that we've had throughout the last year. Then you have a new tech support tech, help desk person, and then there was some conversation and direction from the council about adding a code compliance officer to assist with the duties that the individual already has. Here's your total budget rollup, $250,994,000. That represents a reduction, of course, from the current fiscal year of about $75 million, and most of that offset is what is not in this budget, is a north wastewater treatment plant. We had been putting $80 million in as a placeholder in case there was funding. Don't anticipate that in this fiscal year, so we didn't want to artificially inflate the budget number. I think it's as simple as that. First time I've seen this slide. Next slide, please. Yeah, so that, again, is just a reiteration of the process that I discussed earlier. Tonight, there are two things on your agenda. The first would be to set the maximum mil rate, and the second would be the first read of the adoption of the budget. You can give us different directions in regard to some of the elements in the budget and be happy to answer any questions you may have. As you can see, most of the department heads are in the room should you have individual questions about department operations.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and take a, make a motion to accept or make a motion to discuss the budget, proposed budget.
I'll make a motion to discuss the proposed budget, well, to discuss the proposed millage rate. Just right there.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, or Jenny?
I didn't get the second motion. Was that Vice Mayor? Councilmember Carroll? Excuse me, Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Councilmember Veick?
Aye.
Councilmember Razik?
Aye.
Mayor Kehoe?
Aye.
Okay. Amy Jo?
Okay. Let's go. I have a couple of que, first, before I even get into this thing, are we able to pay for the code compliance officer out of the building fund?
Yeah, building fund. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Carroll, that is a good question. We have a meeting scheduled with the attorney. The state law was recently changed in regard to eligible expenses. I know I got an email from Mr. Maslow today touching on that, so I don't have an answer tonight on that.
But we're looking into it. All right, cool. Okay, let me go to the right page. All right, I'm going to start by picking on the PD, because I love them. So I have to find the right page. There we go. So while I was going through the comparison, I noticed there's some portions of budget that are being set aside for things that aren't necessarily needs, and in some cases, they're not being used. So just picking on the PD for a minute, there's, and printing and binding, two years ago, their budget was 5,000. They spent 2,500. This year, their budget was 5,000. They've spent about 1,300. Next year, they proposed 5,000. I said, why don't we make that 3,000, and that saves us 2,000. So I went through the whole thing with that generally in mind. So other examples, advertising, the PD has $1,000 there. They've never used any of it, so I reduced that to 500, and left them 500 to still use and just in case they needed it, because I do want them to have the money they need. But in some cases, we have like $2,000 set aside for shipping and postage. Two years ago, they used 1,200. Last year, or this year so far, they've used 600. And so next year, I propose that we move that down just a little to 1,500, because they haven't even come close. Chief, I have a quick question. Come on down. In small tools and equipment, you have 100,000. That's for your guns, correct?
Yeah, actually, that's a fantastic question for finance as well. But yes, rather than it being built into our CIPs, coming out of discretionary funds or so forth, it's simply added into our small tools and equipment. I think it was a total of about $50,000.
Yeah, it was about $50,000 if I remembered correctly. So I didn't touch that, because I just wanted to make sure you have the money for that. There was another one, and I had a question for you. Gasoline, should that, the budget for that went up again this year, even though the cost from la, two years ago to this year went down? Do we mean for, like, because we have it in-house now, so shouldn't it be a little less? Like, I'm not saying a lot less.
Well, I think, I think that we'll have a better gauge on that after this year's total, looking at our fuel, if the in-house, how much savings versus just security that's going to provide. You know, fuel's volatile. Trump says it'll come down, so I'm saying it won't.
Okay. Inside, I didn't see it in this particular thing that I was looking at here. You also are replacing a fifth of the fleet, is that correct?
So we have a rotation, and I'm trying to answer your questions as quickly and as directly as possible. There are nine vehicles up for replacement this year. There's approximately 45 to 50 vehicles that we have in fleet that we continue to service. So we stay on track of nine vehicles currently per year. That'll put us on about a five to six-year rotation.
Of a five to six-year shelf life. Does that include a new vehicle for the K-9 officer?
It does. Well, a K-9 vehicle's no different than any other vehicle, just some additional equipment.
Got to outfit it, that's all.
Right.
It's got a couple of different things, just because, yeah, I think that. Uniforms, I liked it that. We've got, two years ago, 39,9, spent 21,000. This year, 41,9, spent about 20,000. Does next year, would that include, like, a bulletproof vest for our K-9?
I don't know that that's been even looked at, to be honest with you. Great question. It's about a $700, it's about a $700 item.
Oh, well, then that should definitely be, okay. Please get a vest for my dog. Our dog, our dog.
There actually may be one. I'll have to backtrack and look that up.
Okay. And I think that's most of what I touched on for the PD. So for every department, I went through that and did similar to the same thing. I can provide numbers. But when I looked at that, I don't see any reason we need to go above 5.55, and that includes keeping dispatch, which I feel like it's kind of been pushed on us all year that we need to get rid of dispatch, and I would disagree with that. I think that's short-sighted at best. We're a growing city. It's going to get, I feel like in the long run, that's going to be far more expensive than the savings we're going to get in the short run. That was that. I do think we need to unfreeze the PD, the extra officer. How many openings do you have right now?
We currently have five active vacancies.
So I mean, and on one hand, you look at it, like, it doesn't make sense to have six, but on the other hand, looking forward to the future, who's to say he's not going to be able to hire six recruits really quick next year at the beginning of the year, and then we'll have those on the road? And as Mr. Hein's pointed out, many times, the PD grows slow. So we want to make sure we're providing for that. I think that's it for you.
Thank you.
That's all I've got for you.
Thank you.
Um, I did, lay it out. I did that for other departments. I have numbers, and I'm kind of stuck on, I don't think we need to go above 5.5. And I'll even go 5.55, keep dispatch if it makes it easier for everybody, but I think there's plenty of space in this budget to take away some wants without touching any needs. And like I said, and every single thing where I was like, oh, I think we can tighten our belt there, it's things like uniforms, it's things like office supplies. There was shipping and postage for, I don't even know which department I'm looking at, but two years ago, it was 4,400, they spent 3,300. Last year was 5,000, they spent 3,700. This year's 5,000. I put down that we could call that 4,500 and save 500. So in some places, it's small amounts, in some places, it's bigger amounts, but I just feel like we can do a better job and use our citizens' money a little bit more responsibly. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines?
Can we go back to the organizational chart, please? I see that under finance, am I reading it correctly, that there will be two full-time people under procurement? Under procurement? Can you all please explain that to me? I mean, right now, do you all have the policies and procedures in place for procurement? And if you could, please explain what those two positions are, I'd appreciate it.
The two positions for procurement are a buyer position, which is basically the general administrative type stuff for the department, and then the other will be a proc- administrative type stuff for the department, and then the other will be a procurement manager position, which will oversee that and manage all the bids and solicitations and make sure the policies are followed.
Do you all have updated policies for procurement?
We have policies that were updated, I believe, in early 2024 is when they came to council last.
So you'll have one manager over one person?
They're managing the whole process, so yes. They're, they'll be managing all the procurement for the city, which involves working with every department in the city in order to purchase according to the policy guidelines.
Well, while we're talking about reducing expenses, this is one that I really would like to see revisited, the procurement manager. Any idea what that salary would be?
We have not posted that position yet, so we still have to draw up the job description, but it would fall in line.
So you don't have any idea what the salary would be?
That would be probably an HR question.
What about the procurement specialist?
The procurement specialist position is posted currently with the salary.
And what is the, the salary?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. To answer a question, Vice Mayor, the range for the manager would be between, I'd say 70 to 85,000 based on market value. And the specialist would be somewhere around 50 to 55K. That's my best estimate.
I guess I'm still trying to wrap my head around one procurement manager and then one procurement specialist. I, for some reason, thought that the procurement specialist would have been under finance. It seems like to me way back that that was discussed. And I just don't see how you're going to have a manager making, what'd you say, 80,000?
Approximately 70 to 85K.
And then you're going to have a procurement specialist making 50,000?
Oh, 50 to 55,000 depending on qualifications, experiences.
So I guess my comment here is make it make sense because I'm not understanding. My background was in procurement, albeit I wasn't a buyer. I wasn't a buyer. I was a procurement analyst. And this just doesn't make sense to me. I would really like to see the PDs for the manager as well as the specialist. Is that possible? Pam?
I'm sorry, you want to see what?
The PDs, is that possible? Position descriptions.
Job descriptions? Yeah. We have the buyer one is posted out on the website under the recruitment and we have not drafted the full job description for the manager.
Well, I, I have some real concerns about the procurement manager managing one person. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
That it?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Fike?
Kehoe, before you sit down, sorry, got a question. Those salary ranges you're giving, you can just shout from the background, I don't care. Does that include benefits?
No, that's just based on unloaded cost.
So benefits are on top of that. That's all I needed to know. Thank you. April, I have a question for you. When I met with you all last week, we talked about, I, and you'll remind me of the figure, that you had worked with all the different departments and found somewhere between 200 and 250,000 that you pinched out of everybody's budget. Wasn't that the number we talked, no? No? Never mind. Well, we talked about, you worked with, with the departments and found monies that you could move out. I forget what the total figure was. It's on a different sheet of paper. It's not in this book, but refresh my memory on that.
Are you talking about like where we move money out to balance it?
It could be. We talked about that a little bit.
Okay. So before the, before the budget was.
Right.
Produced at the 5, 6 rate.
Thank you.
There was multiple adjustments made to different departments to get us down to that rate.
Okay. And I know that we've kind of talked about, you know, they felt they needed it, you could move it around. Do you remember what that total figure was that you gave me by chance? Not trying to put you on the spot, I'm really not. I was, I was, I was going to talk, it was in the 250, all right, that's, that's it. That's the only question I had. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That it? Mr. Radzick?
I'm going to take a different approach. We have four different versions, A, B, C, and D. If I look at version D, we definitely need to set up some sort of a hurricane reserve. I believe it would be in our best interest to get money together for trails and sidewalks. That's point number one. Point number two is how are we going to afford it? Part of the answer will be, and I don't know if April has and Pam have this information, part of the answer to getting some of this money is what we will typically see at November 30th, when everything gets settled for the state monies and, and the county monies. Just roughly, how much do you think we will see additional revenues that will be your first budget amendment at November 30th?
State revenues have been tracking pretty much on target. However, the permitting revenues have been up and will come in above the budget for the amount that was going into the general fund.
So we're not going to have that answer per se, but maybe you can find something a little bit better by the second budget meeting? Because this is, this is where my head is at, Mr. Mayor. If I started off at the 5.5 and if I added into it the trails and the sidewalks and the hurricane reserve, that is $500,000 or 2/10 of a mil, bringing us close to 5.7, okay? I'm not an advocate of wanting to increase taxes, but I do understand the need for hurricane reserve and again, trails and sidewalks, sidewalks especially. I, I happen to know that there is another issue coming to the city council's way to the tune of millions of dollars because someone tripped over a sidewalk. And I know about it personally because it happened in my subdivision. So again, sidewalks are important to try to get under control and fixed or otherwise. I believe at a 5.7 milage rate, we should get a police officer. I believe that the strategic initiative line should have one lump sum total with a breakdown by project that can be moved around at the council's will, that the strategic initiative will not be touched unless it comes before the council, so you have complete control over it. I, asking Mr. Hind, the fire assessment up on the revenue line, did that stay at 825, 700? Did, did that move as of last night's meeting?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no. That is based on when we talk about revenues, fire assessment, as you know, the whole assessment is 3.9. That represents 825,000 reduction in subsidy. So that goes back into the general fund.
Okay. So that's the, the most important thing, Mr. Mayor, again, is whenever you put together the strategic initiatives, it needs to be council restricted, okay? Other than that, I don't know how we fund some of these things if we don't go up in a milage rate, but the direction to the staff should be 5.7, make it work with these different things that we want.
I should remember, was it 5.7 before?
No, it was 5.5.
Oh, were they reduced?
Oh, I don't remember. 5.8 comes to mind, but not 5.7.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I apologize. We didn't have, and we will for the second reading, have the historical mil rate because there were some comments that maybe didn't align with factual analysis last night about your milage rate being one of the higher in the region. It's not. It's below the midpoint. And Mr. Mayor, Councilman, you're, you're correct. The milage rate was for a long period of time, 5.9. And then it dropped to 5.2 and went up to 5.5.
So the one thing, Mr. Mayor, that you got to think about is that what the milage rate was a couple of years ago did not factor it into the fact that we had no fire assessment fee, we didn't have no extra revenues. So trying to look at a milage rate historically just really wouldn't tell you a lot.
Well, I, I refresh my memory, Mr. Hind. We, we did a little exercise, and thank you very much, Pam and April, for doing it. If we rolled the, the fire assessment into the milage rate, what would the milage rate actually be?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did do that exact exercise because I know that the general direction and concept and charge to the fire assessment committee was to look at equity and to reduce the burden on homeowners and place more of a, because as you know, a fire assessment has to have a nexus, meaning you can't just assign a certain percentage of the operating budget towards basic life support to big boxes because you want them to pay more. It's got to be related to the calls for service. Property tax, of course, is distributed differently. We did that exercise and what we found was the net impact would actually be more burdened to a property owner, homeowner than with the fire assessment and a milage rate comparable to this.
And wasn't it north of 7.5?
Yes.
And so, and it only made a difference of $100,000 at the end of the, the whole exercise, right, to do that? So that gives us where we were, where we are.
So, so real quick, the, the only problem, well, the biggest problem I see in rolling the fire into the milage rate, and I think I mentioned this to you before, is the closer we get to the 9.9 is the more eyes is going to be on the city as what's going on here and it's going to hamper your ability to, to get some grants, it's going to hamper your ability to get some loans. So the number one reason, in my opinion, not to roll it in there is, first off, you have a guaranteed stream of $3.1 million that's not going to change with valuations. Your evaluations would go up and how much are you really paying that you wouldn't have? But again, the biggest issue is don't get too high on your milage rate to the point that it, it causes concern with the auditor, who's going to write you up as, as a going concern issue or otherwise. So just be careful of what we do with that.
I think we all backed off of it when we saw what it would do to the, each of the levels versus what we ended up with, with the, with the commercial taking on a, a bigger, it was more fair the way it came out the other way. I just wanted that for a comparison of where we are now to where we were. And then I'm going to ask to beg your indulgence, and I know that you'll help me and correct me on some of this stuff, but I, I am following the Barbara Gaines and I prepared my statement for this evening. And I want to start out by saying that this is my first budget process with a, with a city or with any government entity. And it's been a real learning experience. And where it's a learning experience is the, the difference in how it's approached. And, and I'll get into my statement in just a second, but just to give you a little background, where I'm coming from, in a, in a business world, you look at your revenue and you look at the increase in revenue, like ours is about 4%, right? 34%, it's 32 or 30 something, 4%. And you say to all the departments, this is what we have to spend. Then you tell us how you come in under that, that scenario of revenues versus expenses. And then each department develops their priorities and then brings it in at that with anything out to the side that's extraordinary, that's something that's life, health, or safety, that has to be, you know, a higher priority and is put off to the side. So I just prepared this and so please, please indulge me. After reviewing in detail the information sent, I must thank the departments and our finance team for the extraordinary detail offered in the process as well as the meetings and discussions for the materials that took place after. And I'm saying that because this year, we got the line items all the way back to 2023 so we could have a historic viewpoint. I want to offer a couple of observations. As our staff continues to be ambitious in plans for Groveland and the timelines to get there, in my opinion, it's obvious that we may be overplanning and unable to deliver when we look at the historical data. This only is my one opinion, one person sitting up here. My concern is that we, we budget funds for projects not completed or started in fiscal year, thereby either tying up funds or resources that could be used in other areas or require a tax rate based on unrealistic use of funds thought to be needed. Keeping this in mind, I would recommend to prioritize those items that need to, that need or can be completed in fiscal year and budget those in that, in those funds. Currently, we seem to, to be understaffed and underfunded for all that we wish to do. So putting thought into rightsizing the projects to the amount of staff we currently have and resources we currently have, we may need to look at that so that we can complete those tasks. This year, in my opinion, that we should dial back the new projects or projects not started and concentrate on completing those projects or tasks that have been fully realized. For example, code written for the Edge, we have a five-year strategic plan. And when we come to the, the code for the EcoAgra, the Edge, the acreage, we're still waiting on that. Expand retail for town centers. We adopted a plan that said town centers would all have retail components. And that was sold on the fact that when we have a developer develop, that we would have enough retail there to accommodate it so we keep people off the roads, that they would have retail within their, their area. We have yet to realize that. And we need to look at when we do that Edge or Eco side as, as a balance to the other different options, which we have a lot of the smaller lot sizes and things which contribute to high density and high density contributes and the more resources needed. The comprehensive plan, we want to redefine that already. We've overshot the former comprehensive plan by what I consider 20% or a significant amount. And so the, the density must be redefined. What can our infrastructure or ecosystem actually handle? And how will these changes affect the land use plan? That's a major topic. If we change the comp plan, that land use plan is going to have to be adjusted. When, when will council be interviewed on the comp plan and direction? That's a, that's just a question. And will we have authorization or approvals next time we go beyond what the comp plan says? Landscape code. Landscape code, we are enforcing on many of the developers. I, I've had. I've had meetings with contractors, but we have yet to adopt a true landscape code for council approval. Details on requirements and enforcement are unclear, as far as I'm concerned, and input from the community is needed for this landscape code. And that's something that we need to go back and backfill to make sure that we're buttoned up on. We know about wastewater, wastewater treatment. We've got a ton of projects going on there that's sucking the resources out of this city. What is it, $170 million altogether? That's huge when you look at our budget that's only in the 30 millions. 1% off on that $170 million is going to be about half of what our budget is. We've got to go back and really make sure that is buttoned up. We need to conceptualize downtown, including the train station. Stormwater plans depend on having a solid idea of what's going to happen with the existing buildings and parking needed. We should be concentrating on that, as well as the stormwater plan and sequencing it. Parks and Recreation, rather than expanding, we need to revisit Parks and Trails master plan and make... follow it or make adjustments. Maximum penetration into venues has to be looked at. We have a gymnasium. We've already talked about $200,000 a year. What's the penetration? How many people do we have going in there? And everything from dance classes to bingo, we need to have more penetration into that. We need to fill that up. The regional parks, we've got that on, we're constructing it. How do we maximize that in parks as a whole? We need to develop a metric system that other places have to really determine what the penetration is and what the capacity is so we're not just expanding because we said we needed to expand. We need to expand when and if we need it. Our Parks Plan also designates a lot of small, individual, community parks. If we keep building big parks and then build the small ones, we will be taking attendance away from the big ones because we're going to make it more convenient. So in the master plan, we really need to put another pencil to that. Therefore, we need to look into just taking advantage of the grant or vendor-supported projects for this year with it have little impact on both our labor model and our resources. Such things that are in the Parks and Rec Plan, kayak rental, that's a vendor issue. That's not anything that comes out of our... It could be a fundraiser, but... And bicycle rental was ranked high in the master plan. Those are issues that don't take a lot of resources that we can add a benefit. What does this mean? Look at the projected revenue and match projects to that model. Concentrate on the infrastructure this year and projects that are a must, not a want. Develop a restricted reserve fund. I'm just stealing from Mr. Radzik, that will not tie up capital beyond the fiscal year, and create a tighter budget and tap into the talent that we have actively to manage their departments. Bottom line, concentrate on maximizing in the investment we've already made while concentrating on our aging and needed infrastructure. And I'll now turn it back to exactly what was said earlier. I went through line by line. I've turned it over, and I think there's some analysis that comes back. But there's a significant, in my opinion, my one opinion, amount of what we call padding in the budget. And so what everybody does, each is padded a little bit, and what that ends up doing, when every department pads and when you add it up, it's a significant amount. Also, I have questions on the revenue side. If we had things like if we had miscellaneous revenue in 2023 for $460,000 and realized $960,000 in 2024, miscellaneous was $557,000 and realized 865, and not the total year yet, or 685, rather, and next year we're budgeting 388. That's less than we made back in 2023. Maybe a logic area, logical area, but as I go through, on one side, we're, I think, way too conservative on the revenue side and way too conservative with padding on the expense side. You have my comments on everything. I have the utilities now that you gave me last night to hand over to you today to take a look at, but what was said about 5,000 zero use, 5,000 zero use, there's many, many examples of the nickel and dimes. And believe me, the savings, the $200,000 or $300,000 isn't going to come from one thing. It's going to come from a lot of 5,000s and a lot of 2,000s that historically should be adjusted down. If we have a reserve fund, like has been said, it gives a safety net to some of the departments if there's an extraordinary expense, which you can asterisk on the report and say extraordinary expense comes before the council, and we'll take care of that. Other areas that I really would like to understand is when the funds come back from FEMA for the half a million or so that we spent on past hurricanes, does that go back into the general fund? And does that alleviate some of these pressures that we're budgeting for another so many thousands of dollars? I think it was a quarter million, I can't forget, for that fund. But where I'm at with this budget is, let's take a deep breath. We've swung for the fences. Everybody's working to death. Everybody is going way beyond... Their RPMs are going way beyond the red line, and we need to, like, back it down for the long term and say, this is how much money we got. This is how we can go backfill what we already have and make a very good return on the investments we've already made for our guests, for our public. And the days of I want it all are over. The days of we need to adjust to what we can spend and what the public will give us is the way we need to go. So am I at 5.5? I'm sorry to say no.
Get now.
I do look at somewhere between 5.5 and 5.7 for discussion purposes in order to make sure that we get through what we absolutely can. And I would really appreciate us taking a very good look at all the projects that we have, that we say we're going to do, and determine what we can do, and let's don't go beyond what we can do.
I have a question. Are we allowed to set a rate tonight and then lower it again at the next meeting?
Yes.
Perfect.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, when you start using the word projects, are you talking about projects that we are funding with the general fund, which isn't many? Or are you talking about projects that are funded with dedicated fundings?
I'm talking about the stuff out of the general fund, but also we have grants that we have in there, and there's a lot of those that are kind of backed up. We've had years where we've had money tied up on things like that. Again, I don't come from the government background, but in business, you get criticized tremendously for not utilizing the money to expand or to make a return on investment and to park money in different places as holding spots. In my opinion, just one opinion is probably not the best use of that money, and what it does is cause us for other projects to go out and raise the millage rate in order to fund other projects while this money's parked for these that we haven't used.
So building on two more things. One, I need to get an understanding at the bottom of some of the versions, there's a $350,000 carry forward. Is that in excess of the 15% reserve?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So if you're looking at this from an entirety budget, and your concerns, and again, I can see where the concerns would be, where the revenues are not coming in what they should be, or the expenses are not coming in what they would be. At the end of the day, the budget is $350,000 more. Am I correct? We've got $350,000 more in revenues than we have in expenses. So as a total budget, we're almost straight on. We're less than one-tenth of a mil difference. So although the line items definitely sing a different tune, the end of the day, since when we adopt the budget, whatever it's going to be, it becomes, like you've heard said before, a fun balance budget. So when I look at this, we're not that far off. Those line items should be tweaked or could be tweaked from an operational perspective so that the staff can take a look at, well, I've got $20,000 worth of gasoline, and I am only spending 10. Why? That is what the aligned items are actually for, okay?
Some of the departments are really good about it. I'll say that. There was a few that are really, like, tight to their budget, and they adjusted down when they needed to. Just off the top of my head, I know fire was really good, Parks and Rec was really good, finance was really good, which is no surprise. Let's hope so. They better be the ones. So some of those were really, really good. Others had a lot more, I felt like, wants in their budget, and I think that's okay. But real quick on the grant thing, I do want to say that I do think it's pretty important to get TJ, the two people he needs for his office, because he does have all of those projects going on that are funded, and they do need people to be able to navigate all of that. So I just want to throw that in there, too.
Mayor.
Well, therein is that we find the money in other places to move it. But back to where my thought process is, and for the council to... I don't know if you stay up at night. I do. When we have a 15% reserve, which isn't even 90 days worth of operating fund, and what business have we all been in where we have a reserve that's less than 90 days? Those are issues that we need to... That's why I'm looking at the 5.7 and stuff, is we need to really protect the city, protect our people. And also, when we look at the budget, it's also... Those line items are... Boy, what I said is, we need to look a lot closer at infrastructure and moving things as we find it here to infrastructure, because as we know, that's something that's going to come due. You can put it off another year or two more years, but sooner or later, the pipes are going to collapse, the toilets aren't going to flush, there's going to be issues because we have a very old infrastructure. And that's where we need to really look at wants versus needs in the sidewalks, the stormwater, you know, and those basic fundamental benefits that I think that the government's supposed to supply. We need to make sure that we're putting a priority on those. And believe me, I know that it's not going to be fun where we're all running for election because nobody wants to get their picture taken beside the stormwater pipe. It's better to be at a park, but we have to start getting this infrastructure straightened out, or it's going to be just like wastewater, where it's going to hit us all at once, and there's going to be a tremendous expense to all of our people, and nobody will... Nobody will be happy because it's going to happen.
Mary Kell.
Yes.
May I speak? I don't think that it's just the projects. I think that there also needs to include salaries. And where am I going with this? I'm back to one procurement manager and one buyer. So when it comes to additional personnel for the projects that we have, I'm asking you all to make it make sense when you come forth. One procurement manager, one buyer. Do... How many contracts do we do a year? Anybody have any idea the number of contracts that we do? Now, I will say that I think that $50,000 or $50,000 for a buyer is underrated, underpaid. But I'm asking you all to please include, take a good, hard look at the salaries that you all are projecting for these people.
So, Ms. Gaines, if you feel, and I'm saying this from me to you, no criticisms, no nothing, but if you feel that strongly that we've got too many in procurement, then one of the things we might want to do is start with the organizational chart and say, I want to fund 178 and a half people, leaving one person out, and go from there. That's the way that we start as a council, is that we're in charge of the organizational budget, okay? We set the staffing. So if you feel that strongly, then at some point, before we move any further, let's go ahead and get a consensus that the org chart should be 178, and then say, this should be either an unfunded position, or it can stay on the org chart but unfunded. And at that point, the staff's got to come back, and they got to make ends meet. But that would be my recommendation to you, since you're the one that's passionate about it, is to make, you know, get a consensus that we start with one unfunded position on the procurement.
Yes.
I would build on that and say what we need, and I've said it before, is the total cost of labor. You don't take FTEs to the bank, you take costs to the bank, what it costs the organization. As you pay more, you get higher efficiencies. People need to be rewarded, but there should be higher efficiencies. I think this is a whole topic hopefully we can cover even in a workshop, because there are... There is some input on the organizational chart. You know what I'm going to be talking about? We've talked about it. But I think that we need to delve into that very, very heavily on what the future chart looks like.
Since this is the first budget meeting, we should do something. And by the way, what does $50,000 fully loaded come up to? Is it 1.6?
65, 60, it's 25% now.
Probably closer to 30%. It's probably about 80, 85.
So when you want to talk about cost, there is a cost, okay? But again, that's the way that we should be approaching the start of this budget, is to set the organizational chart and the number of FTEs. I mean, we can't necessarily do it by cost.
Can we look at the cost savings or the potential cost savings for things like outsourcing HR? Like, I know payroll is a big thing to outsource, and that comes, like, computer programs, it could simplify it, streamline it. I know there's companies that just outsource entire HR departments. We don't necessarily have to go that route, but it is an option that we can look at. But just like payroll, taking that off their plate might help significantly because anything could save hours, and if you're saving hours, you're saving money.
So the only thing I would say, again, about procurement, is as we start with the construction of the new fire department, procurement is going to go up by way of contracts and whatnot. So now the... And I'm kind of going back and forth. I've got tug-of-war going on here. So is one procurement person going to be able to handle all of the contracts for the new fire department? Are they going to be able to do everything for South Lake Regional Park, even though we're getting reimbursed for it? So the question is, are we going to be putting too much on one person? And do we need a person right now, which is why I'm saying unfunded? Do I need that extra procurement person when I haven't really guided into, you know, a lot of the contracts? You can leave it unfunded and then fund it in the middle of the year with any type of excesses that you've got. So that's why I say leave it on the org chart, but unfunded.
But Councilman Radzik, see, as I look at the budget, it's not just that one position. So if there's one in communication or one in CRA, so I could make a motion for that one unfunded position in finance, but there are others. So how would you do that? Again, my question is, how many contracts per year about? If you took an average, how many do we award per year?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor, if you'll allow the manager to give some input to this.
Thank you.
And just some context and a reminder, these aren't new positions. We went through the workshops, we went through each department, we talked about it, and this was actually part of the mid-year budget amendment that... was actually part of the mid-year budget amendment that actually lowered the overall expense of procurement, because we historically have had a director and a purchasing officer. And we've downgraded that director position, moved it under finance, because I thought it more closely aligned. Right now, we're using a third party to handle the numerous contracts, bids and other things. And we will definitely get you that data. I know Anita kind of smiled because Anita gets to sign off on all those contracts. So we'll be glad to do that. And also, there's P-card management, we'll get the job descriptions that you asked for and Deo and Pam will meet with the Vice Mayor specifically. But I just wanted to point out and caution about basing the budget on FTEs as opposed to prioritization of, you know, based on all the workshops, you based on the four alternatives, what we currently provide. I guess the question staff would have is, do you want us to do anything different? You know, if you adjust the millage, and I heard portions of that, I heard police officer, I heard sidewalks, I heard stormwater, I heard certain line items. And I think the mayor's comments were great. A couple of minutia ones, first of all, the mayor did submit Thursday, when he met with finance, a highlighted list of the complete budget. We have gone through most of that throughout the weekend and today, and there is definitely some opportunity to trim some of the line items. There's also some that cannot be changed and we'll give explanations for that, because we're only so far through the year, there are some active POs and other things. The other thing I'd caution against is just the nature of governmental budgeting. I can't sign a contract or a PO for certain projects like wastewater plants or regional parks if the money isn't in the budget. Okay? So even though we know Mike Walker's not going to build the park in the next two months, that money has to be in the budget and then it's carried forward. And furthermore, it doesn't have any effect on the millage rate or the general fund typically.
And if I can just build on what you were saying, Mr. Ratzig, in many, and I'm sure a lot of us have gone through companies that have a 30% employee benefit rate. And a lot of what we've done in the past is get part-time, that don't require that extra 30%. Or when we have a big, pig going through the python, we hire an outside source to help for that period of time rather than having somebody on for the whole year. So those are the kind of things I think that we should, my suggestion would be that maybe we should be looking at. And as you go through that, I can't wait to see your thing come back. And I really appreciate Pam's holding my hand through that whole thing and stuff, but...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that input is welcome, because again, some of you are new and we need you to understand the fundamentals, but also what comprises the operation. And any questions about potential outsourcing, whether it be dispatch, fleet maintenance, payroll, we've probably had those conversations and analysis, but it's worthy of having public dialogue, transparency and explaining to you pros and cons.
Well, I know as benefits go up, that becomes more attractive. A year ago or two years ago, it might not, but when we look at some of these things this year on healthcare and all this other stuff, it's just, it's just a backbreaker in some cases.
I have another kind of random question. How long does it take to get the refund from FEMA? Because we're coming up on one year, I'm assuming like probably, will we even see that in this coming year or would it be the following year?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Kara, I don't, we're not expecting it this fiscal year. In fact, it hasn't closed out even. So the paperwork still is not fully closed out.
Okay.
Work for FEMA? Don't you know anybody there?
Don't you know a guy? Do you get a guy?
Not anymore.
What, we increasing total FTEs from last year to this year? Is it 1.5 or?
Can you go back to that slide, please, Pam? Yes, what you're adding is a code enforcement officer converting the lean researcher from part-time to full-time and adding the IT help desk.
So we're adding, we had an unfunded position for a policeman and you're adding a half of FTE or half-time for the position, for the code enforcement.
When you say unfunded police.
Well, we have a frozen police position right now, unfunded.
Correct.
We're going to, in that 179.5 is one officer?
No.
No?
These are funded positions.
These are, the 179 is a funded position, which includes a new cop.
It includes the position, but there's no funding for it. We have two frozen police officer positions in that count of 65 for police.
So going back to the organizational chart, and my original remark is, we need to adopt the organizational chart. If I do so, I'm now going to have 65 FTEs for the police, which is 64 that were funded and one that was unfunded.
I understand what you're saying.
That's what I wanted to say.
I thought we funded one of them at the mid-year, leaving only one still unfunded.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, with the school resource officer you added in the mid-year budget.
There's still two unfunded.
Still two.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, going back, and I'm not wanting to step on Ms. Gaines's, you know, passion, you know, if we're not happy at 179 and you want to bring down to 178.5 on an unfunded position until we get things straightened out, I would, again, I would encourage you to start with the organizational chart, because that's one of the things that they're going to need in order to get us to the millage rate that we're looking for.
Councilmember Ratzig, it has nothing to do with me being unhappy. I know, I know, okay. I'm just asking that it all makes sense. One procurement manager, 70, $80,000 over one buyer, that doesn't make sense to me. So it's not a degree of being happy, it's a degree of being sensible and strategic when it comes to filling these positions. And I'm sure that that will not be the only position that I will bring up as these budget proceedings continue.
So this is the first reading of the budget, okay? So any changes we want to make to your organizational chart needs to be made now or in two weeks, okay? And again, going through this is important for the staff to come back at a 5.65. I'm making it up. With the subtraction of one full-time person, with, you know, moving 350 of carry forward into the budget, all those things in the mix is what the staff is going to need from us. Okay? So, Chef, with that said, or, what you think? With that said, I will go ahead and make a motion for 178.5 funded positions and one unfunded position that will be looked at as we get further on in the budget year. If we don't go through that specific protocol, the staff is not going to have enough of information to go ahead and bring back what we want.
Okay, that's good input, but can I just take that thought in a different direction? This organizational chart as it stands now, Mike, how many direct reports do you have? There's more than this, right? It's 15, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe it is now 14.
14. So in our upcoming workshop and we're discussing goals and all that, I think that the very structure of the organizational chart needs to be discussed. Maybe not changed, but at least say this is what we're going to go towards in order to get to where we need to be. You and I have talked about this before and I think that discussion can kind of get us where we're all in agreement and bring it home to where we can have something more solid to present.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for that. And what staff would respectfully request is, instead of dealing with number of FTEs, tell us what you want to accomplish. So a maximum mill rate with certain policy directives, dispatch in or out, extra police officer in or out, sidewalks in or out, strategic reserve set aside, carry forward or no carry forward, those are kinds of, the kind of variables or policy directions that are going to be essential for us to come back for the second read and provide a proposed budget, which then you can, again, alter at that stage.
With that said, if I could just jump in now and say, I think that we all voted not to take the, this year, take the dispatch out. We weren't quite comfortable with that whole scenario. And do I have consensus there?
Yes.
Because I think it was a vote that we took.
That was in the workshop environment.
Workshop, right.
So now we need to codify that now, so...
Yeah, well, I just think we just need to give you direction, right?
Yes.
And give you the different things. I would personally, as one member, like to move away from expansion and move towards infrastructure. And really take a look at the, those that are not grant funded, totally grant funded, looking at, yes, it's sidewalks, but stormwater, everything else. And Mr. Hein, a tremendous amount of energy put around, and it's going to take energy, the downtown concept, because we can't do stormwater till we know where the parking's going to be or what the buildings are going to be and where they're going to be and all that. And so that's just like 19. We can't do 19 till we get the PD and E done, right? Everything is going to really center around what does that look like? And that's where I think our energy maybe should be put instead of some of the expansions. I don't have factual, I only have anecdotal, when I drive by different parks, I don't see them at 80% capacity, right? And I don't know how parks are versus restaurants, but we always, we always build to 100, we always make sure that we have 20% less than we need, seats less than we need on a Friday or Saturday night, right? So you have a line and you're more efficient during the week. So I don't know what that ratio is, but I would definitely say that the priority of the city right now should be, what are we going to be when we grow up and what's the infrastructure we need underneath? So we're not doing a lot of landscaping and things that we're going to have to tear up later, you know? It's just a sequential thing. Any thoughts?
I think I've got most of mine out and I think we're good.
Gaines?
Not in this.
Are you in agreement with that statement? We have to give direction, you know, and it can't be just me giving direction, it has to be all of us.
Would you like me to start with the motion?
Yes, sir.
We knew which number to be looking at. All right. I'd like to make a motion that we direct the staff to bring back a budget at 5.7. That includes the trails and sidewalks, the hurricane reserve, rolling to $350,000 in carry forward into whatever you need to do to make it work. I want, I want, I think we need the extra cop. No, I don't think we need, we need the extra cop at all cost. Dispatch will stay with the city and we need to look at staffing to see if we are adequately staffed amongst the entire organizational chart. Did I miss anything?
No, that was good. And roll back, find out where we can roll back on some projects that are outstanding, you know?
How do we feel about the two people for utility or for Public Works? TJ also asked for two people.
And keep in mind that we're saying 5.7, it doesn't necessarily have to be that in two weeks.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, absolutely correct, but you cannot, if you set 5.7 by a majority vote tonight, you can't go back to 5.8 or anything above. You're setting a new maximum millage.
Right.
But the direction, as the motion stands, that's clear enough direction for us to then go back and figure out how to put all that into a 5.7 millage rate.
And I think they'll come back with that, but just because he's my friend, I think after going through his utility thing last night and this morning, I think we can find...
I think he needs his two people. And also, I mean, I'd even be willing to give up the hurricane reserve for this year to do that and put that in when the FEMA money comes in. And I know that'll be a while, but fingers crossed, we might not even get a hurricane this year.
I worked in Vegas for eight years and I wouldn't take that bet.
I'm saying.
Only because I've been around a little bit and I keep on hearing you talk about the utilities and whatnot, that's not part of the millage rate that we're talking about.
Right, right.
Okay, we didn't get to that part yet.
I was just saying that I looked at his separate thing and there might be some padding in there that could help him with those two people. I have to turn it over to get it certified.
Can we add that to the motion? That's what I was asking. Because Ratzig made him, did you make a motion? Did you finish making a motion?
Yes.
Can we add the two utility people to the motion? Can we amend that? That was the only other thing I was asking.
What are you wanting to do with the utility people?
There's...
Add to them?
You look at the, at D, Public Works, there's two people that TJ's asked for on that page that are green. There you go. I was trying to add those in.
The enterprise fund, right? That's something different.
That, well, it is the enterprise fund.
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, some of them would be working on streets and other projects. There might, there might be a blend, but again, if you amend your motion to...
You're all, by all means, find it, but...
Yeah. To, if you amend your motion to include the two, we'll include that in the budget we bring back on the 15th.
So moved.
Thank you. I'll second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All right, public input.
Keith Callaway. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Keith Callaway. I live at 9100 Chandler Drive, Groveland, Florida. So I'm sorry I missed the meeting last night. Kind of thought I could speak to that tonight, but apparently I can't, so I will refrain from that. I'm listening to this, and this is kind of all a little new with me as far as city budgeting. I've worked with educational budgeting at a school level, which sometimes would exceed over a million dollars. It's not $230 million or whatever you guys showed up there, but it's the same concept. And I just heard somebody say that we're going to give you, say, 5.7 millage, go make it happen. Well, I'd like to challenge you even further. Take it to 5.5 like it was and make it happen. Because I think it could. I really do think it could. You know, it, you know, when I think about these things, it brought to my mind, I loved what I saw going on up here, because I really came in here fired up tonight. I was ready to go at it. Not so much right now, because I saw some people doing some due diligence that I liked. Somebody, some people taking this line by line. Made me think of a movie I saw one time. Movie was Dave. I don't know if you've ever seen it. Movie about where the president became incapacitated and they failed to stand in for him and, you know, he, my wife's calling, sorry. And anyway, had to stand in for it and he needed a project. Went against his wife, the first lady. It was hysterical. So he brought in his old accountant, the old number two Ty Cottin Rogas, a good pencil sharpener and a calculator. And they started going line by line by the items and saying, mm-hmm, yeah, nope, mm-mm, there's 500, there's 1,000, there's 2,000, we can do this. And they were able to do it. And y'all, this can happen here, too. You know, government is known to over inflate. Oh, let's project for 2,000 and then we're sitting there because we want to make sure we got plenty. But, you know, we all have operating expenses. I have to budget. I've been a school teacher my whole life. Well, not when I was a kid, but for 40 years almost, I've been in education in some state or fashion. My wife was a social worker. We didn't bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars to live with. I had to learn to take that penny and stretch it so thin with a wire that I could wrap it around this building four times. So I'll offer my services to you, I can help you budget, I can help you stretch a penny now. Still doing it to this day. Don't have to as much as I did, but it becomes a force of habit. And I think sometimes we forget that in government, that we could stretch those... And I think sometimes we forget that in government, that we could stretch those pennies, but we hadn't had to do it. We just go on and ask for a lot, and we just take it, and we start spending. And we just keep spending, and we keep spending. And I look at what we spend our money for here in Groveland right now, and, you know, I've made some recommendations to the mayor that I'd love to see. I'd love to see the, you know, what is it? You know, the path that leads into Clearmont. Beautiful in Clearmont. We hit Groveland, mm-hmm, go take a look, old tires and vagrants, just saying. And, you know, see some lights going up there. But right now, I know that that might not be in the budget, so I'm realistic about it. Now, I do believe we could do a little job, better job with using our staff with some mowing. Did y'all go by City Hall today? Y'all need to bump over that if you were in my HOA. Tim knows this. He's, we live in the same neighborhood. I'd be calling the HOA, I'm on the board, I'd be saying, he needs citation for that, citation. But anyway, okay, I'm veering from what I need to talk about here. I think we can do it with 5.5, y'all. When I'm looking down the proposed tax that I gotten from Jordan's office, and now, you know, counting everything in, including the assessment, which is, you know, whether you call it assessment, whatever, it's still a tax, I don't care how you put it, 39% of the cost that I'm going to have to write that check for is going to City of Groveland, if it stands as the proposed here, which already looks like it's going to change some. But I do believe that we could get it to 5.5. I do believe that could happen. So please, I encourage you, get your pencils out, get your calculators out, start line items, some of this stuff, and let's make it happen, y'all, I know you can. I'm really encouraged about what I saw tonight, and I did not come in here thinking I was going to be encouraged. I thought I was going to leave out here mad as a wet satin hen, but I'm not. And I appreciate it. I appreciate what I saw some of you doing, and as detailed as some of you were, I agree with questioning these positions that I see. Here's one, I'm going to manage you, maybe today, maybe to not, whatever, it must be nice. But anyway, I thank y'all, I highly encourage you, please, please, 5.5, make it happen. Thank y'all.
Well, okay, seeing no further public comment, we have a motion, we have a second. Can we go ahead and take the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Radzick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Feig?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye. So passed. Agenda item two, ordinance 2025-24, adoption of fiscal year 2026 budget first reading. Jenny, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes. Ordinance 2025-24, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Lake County, Florida, adopting the final budget for the City of Groveland, Florida for fiscal year October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept agenda item two, ordinance 2025-24?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the budget, ordinance 2025-24.
We have a motion, we have a second?
So we're accepting a budget that they're going to make the changes to, to just make it, okay? I'm just, that's new to me.
Yes, totally fair question, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Councilwoman Carroll, you're absolutely correct. This is the first read, so you're adopting the budget. But you've already altered and lowered the mill rate, so when we come back with the second read, they'll be aligned. And again, you could further lower, but you cannot go above the 5.7 as of a minute ago.
Excellent. Okay, I'll second.
Here we have a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, so, in listening to what you were saying, I would love to bring it down to 5.5, but if I look at it, like I stated before, we only have $350,000 of unused revenue from last year. If I've got that, and I want to bring in trails, and I want to bring in hurricane reserve, which is important, if I start looking at my increases in pension that we've got to do, and I want to look at some of the other stuff, we don't have a choice but to go to 5.7. There's nothing we can do to cut back if I've spent everything that I budgeted last year. I'm paying that increase as well as everyone else, and I've never, ever, ever really looked and wanted to increase a budget until I see that we're so close on that 350. Now, I'm speaking to you, and I shouldn't be, I'm just acknowledging your remarks, and I'm just trying to put it quantitatively in that this is what we had.
Okay, but I can't fire you because you're already resigning.
There you go. Okay. An open comment.
Okay, Ms.--
I'm sorry, was the motion moved and seconded?
Yes.
Are we going for a vote then?
We're just a comment.
No comments. Because we can bring it back and revisit it, so I'm comfortable the way it is right now.
Gaines?
I'm good, yes.
You're good? Ms. Carroll?
It's in the ladies' room.
Okay. Just wait just a second. Okay, and I'm good. So seeing no further discussion, public comment?
Mr. Callaway.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you. I do appreciate you responding back to me, but I also want to say this. You know, when you're saying reserve, y'all keep raising rates on us, I don't have a reserve. I have to have a reserve at my house, too. So in case something happens, and I'm going to give you a well example right now, I'm glad I had a little reserve, had a little, so I had some problems lately. Unfortunately, I have a dog. Dog's got to have surgery. Doesn't have to, but it's going to, $2,600. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, I was put in the hospital. Right now, I just got a $350 bill from the ambulance, and we just starting the games. So I got to have a reserve. If y'all keep raising prices on me, the Callaway Reserve is gone, and I can't keep pulling out of my reserve. So I said, again, find somewhere else that we can get this. I understand the need for, you know, the hurricane emergency fund, I get it. But I do believe one of the other commissioners said, let's hold off on that for a year. Let's hold off on that for a year. Let's hold off on some of this stuff. Let's look at some of this stuff. And I heard, I heard the mayor say some things that I liked. You know, let's start looking at what's important. Building a sprawling park right now is not a priority. And I understand, we were $350,000, you know, is all we had left, but at the rate I'm going, at the Callaway House, we're not going to have anything left. Because we having to pay, and we have to keep paying now, and I don't want to go and hit the water bill thing going up again, and the millage rate going up, and, you know, like I said, 38% is coming from Groveland. Everything's going up in Groveland. Groveland's becoming not the affordable city that I moved to, man. I moved here because they talked me into moving out of Clearmont, into here. And it's just not working anymore. I mean, y'all, if we're going to do that, I want to look bougie like Clearmont does. I don't want to come down here and see tape across the Hardee's sign and the grass growing up all downtown coming, driving through. Y'all, if, I mean, I'm serious now, if we're talking reserves, I understand reserves, but if I'm paying, I want to get what I, you know, I want it to look nice, and it doesn't look nice right now, I'm just saying. So I do appreciate your comments, and I understand what you're saying, but I think we can wait, and I think we can keep it back to 5.5. I really do. All right, oh, I cannot believe that I'm done with two minutes and 31 minutes, seconds left, but I could run this sucker on down if y'all want me to, but I won't. I appreciate y'all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Concludes public comment. Let's go ahead and take the vote.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Radzick.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Feig?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye.
Does that conclude the business for this evening?
The time is 7:35, and I adjourn the meeting. Thank you.